Everyone ready? We're gonna start. I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Punk Meetings Act, being Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, laws of the state of New Jersey. Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meetings of the Planning Board for the Barrel of Kennelworth for the year 2021, has posted a true copy of the schedule on bulletin board located at the front entrance of Barrel Hall, has mailed true copies of the schedule to the local source, the Star Ledger, and has maintained a copy of the schedule in Barrel Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Punk Meetings Act have been satisfied in regard to this meeting. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a roll call?
Councilman Finistrello?
Here.
Mr. David?
Here.
Mr. Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Pantina?
Here.
Mr. Mazzio?
Here.
Mr. Coella?
Here.
Mr. Damondo?
Here.
Mr. Skedary?
Here.
We have a quorum to proceed. First item is approval of the minutes from July 8th. Would someone like to make a motion to... Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Skedary. Do I have a second? A second by Mr. Damondo. All who is in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Next up is communications. Madam Secretary, any communications?
We have some statements.
We have no communications. All right. Moving right along to resolutions. We do have three resolutions to approve. First one being Application 5-21, Shirley Edwards, One Red Oak Lane, Block 147, Lot 17. Are you ready, Mr. Rego?
Oh, okay.
We are on resolutions. So this is 521?
Yes, this is property on One Red Oak Lane. The applicant appeared before us for dimensional variance as in order to install a generator, some condensers, and a six-foot-high fence on the side of her property, which is two front yards facing...
Is it? Foot two?
Foot two. The board granted that, determining that it was the only practical place on her property to construct what she wanted. It's appropriately screened, and the board voted to approve that.
Okay, so we need a motion to memorialize, approve this resolution?
So...
Okay, a motion by Mr. Crenise, a second by Mr. Damondo. Okay, we need a roll call vote on this for those members who are here and heard the case.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Coella?
Yes.
Mr. Skedary?
Yes.
Mr. Damondo?
Yes.
Okay. It's approved. We'll move on to our next resolution is for Application 1-21, Diego De Jesus Neto. It's on 36 North 13th Street, which is Block 177, Lot 18.
This was another application by the applicant who was seeking to improve his house, raising it from one and a half to two stories. They were going to increase the footprint, well, not so much the footprint, the volume, I think 128 square feet addition to the house, which would improve improvements on the second, third floor, bathrooms, et cetera. The only new variance that the applicant had with this application was that their front porch was closer to the... The front yard setback was de minimis, and it only involved the front porch. All the other dimensional deficiencies existed, and they weren't being aggravated. The board approved it with the appropriate conditions.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion to approve the resolution? You have Mr. Skedary, a second again by Mr. Damondo. Can we get a roll call vote for those folks who heard the case?
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Coella?
Yes.
Mr. Skedary?
Yes.
And Mr. Damondo?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And our last resolution is Application 4-21, Deborah Santoramo, 25 North 12th Street, Block 77, Lot 5.
This application is somewhat murky. The applicant apparently, presumably, had a deck constructed in your rear yard, which apparently and originally met the 20-foot rear yard setback. She had... The person who built that deck, she had him add seven more feet to the deck so that the rear yard setback was now 13 feet, which did not comply with the ordinance. That was apparently done without board permission, without permits, without inspections. Came in, indicated that the rear yard, the addition to the deck was because her mother wanted more room on the deck. The board did not feel that that was an appropriate reason, and in a five-to-four vote, denied her request for the deck extension into the setback. And as we discussed, only called... The only five members who voted against this application should be called... It was a five-four vote. The five that voted against it are the eligible members to vote. The yes is to deny the application.
And should some... One of those five also make the motion?
Yes.
A second? So, Mr. O'Brien?
Just a question, Sheriff, if I may. Was Ms. Santoramo aware that we were going to have the resolution this evening? Did anybody notify her?
Well, I didn't notify anybody that the resolution was...
Just wondering if anybody... Okay. I mean, we did state at the last meeting.
Yeah.
I just wondered. Wondered particularly because of the negative vote and traditional communications happening. Thank you.
All right. So is someone who had voted in the majority during the hearing would like to make a motion on this resolution?
So move.
Okay. Mr. Coella? Do I have a second? Okay, second by Mr. Skedary. A roll call vote?
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Coella?
Yes.
Mr. Skedary?
Yes.
I think the former mayor voted yes, but he's not... He's not here.
He voted no.
Well, he voted no on the applicant, yet he's not.
He's not here, though.
So that would've been the five? So that...
That's it? Yep, yep.
All right. That concludes our resolutions, and that brings us to old business. Does anyone have any old business to discuss?
With Kevin's situation?
Yeah, I think the master plan discussion does fall under old business. It's something we've been discussing for a long time. So at our work session, we discussed presenting a formal resolution to the mayor and council, approving Mr. O'Brien to proceed with the preparation of our master plan at a cost of $12,000. And, yeah, so I mean, at this point, we're just gonna more or less do the, kind of the informal vote, and then we'll memorialize it with the actual resolution after Mr. Rego prepares it and presents it at the October board. So, does it... Do we need any further discussion on that matter? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve Mr. O'Brien preparing the master plan at a cost of $12,000? Okay, a motion made by Mr. Clemente, a second by Mr. Damondo. Why don't we take a roll call vote on this?
Yes.
Councilman Finistrello?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Coella?
Yes.
Mr. Skedary?
Yes.
Mr. Damondo?
Yes.
Okay. Young and asleep past. Anything else that we want to discuss under old business? All right. Then we're moving on to new business. First under new business was Application Number 381, 4-20, FDD Realty LLC, 460 Boulevard. That's Block 49, Lot 1. There was a request to adjourn the hearing until our October meeting. I forget the date of the October meeting. Is it October 14th?
If he's going to renotice, yeah, then if we know the date, fine, but if he's gonna renotice, then he'll take care of the time and the place.
14th, Chairman.
The 14th. All right, and I don't know... I don't think there's any audience here tonight that may be here for that particular hearing. I know that there was when we first started this. So, at this point, they will be renoticing everyone, so it's kind of a moot point. All right, do we need to do anything else, other than to make that announcement, Mr. Rego?
No, my people are good.
Okay. Then we can move on to our next application, Number 384, 2-21, which is 50 Bowright Avenue LLC, 50 Bowright Avenue, and that's Block 6, Lot 6. Do we have representation for...
Yes, we do. Good evening, I'm the chairman, I'm the board. My name is John Demassie. I represent the applicant. Just from logistics standpoint, we have a sketch board, so where would we put that? Right over here?
Yeah. It's always difficult, because somebody always gets blocked. Somebody's view always gets blocked, but I guess that's probably the best place that you can stick it. We want to try and have the camera have access to it.
We're gonna notice the publication. Okay, yeah.
That is, Rego, let me just state, I'll have three witnesses. I will have the owner of the building, and is also the owner of the business that's around the building, Jubal Lot. He's gonna testify. He'll explain to the board what his business is, how many employees he has, hours of operation. I will also have the engineer, Mr. Paul Anderson, he'll testify with regard to the site, land, and variances that were required. Finally, I'll have the architect, who will testify basically with regards to the construction that were proposed. In essence, what we're doing is this is an industrial building. This board had granted a variance, a use variance, actually, and some C variances. I think it was in 2015. At that time, there was a dual use on the property, wholesale, granted business and self-storage business. That self-storage business has essentially gone by the wayside, so now it's 100% granted, storage of grant. The applicant is seeking to do two things. Number one is expand the front of the building, and basically just to house the grant. The concept is all this grant should be housed inside the building, not outside. The second part of the application is there were 13 bays or garages that are on the side of the building, will be proposed, and they were used for storage, quite frankly, for the self-storage. So since that has been eliminated, which my client wants to remove those, have a solid facade there, and just have one bay and one range. Again, the whole purpose is to have all of the storage of the grant within the building as opposed to outside. So the architect explained a little about that. I think we also need foresight, I think it was foresight plan waivers, and although I originally wanted to put Mr. Lotta on first, explain the application, the business, so to speak, then the engineer. We have to do the waivers first, and then I'll start with the engineer.
I would suggest we do the waivers first in order to determine whether the application's complete. Other boards I know do that first. You don't want to put the cart before the horse. I think they're asking for four waivers.
That's correct.
And Number 10, 22, 24, and 25, and on Kevin's, on Kevin's planning report, or Kevin, maybe you can, for his zoning report. On the completeness, on the completeness review that Kevin revised on June 14, hopefully you have it, there's... Those four waivers are set forth. Sometimes boards will hear from their planner, who'll say, maybe we don't really need them to move ahead, or they can be conditioned if this is approved, or some form of information like that. Why don't I swear Kevin and Christian in, so they can comment whenever they need to on this, maybe Kevin?
I always think, can we just swear in wall? Wall?
Take a blanket?
Yeah, I mean, enough?
Well, I can with Kevin and Christian. The others, we'd like to... One at a time is easier than...
All right.
It avoids everybody talking. Gentlemen, with regard to this application, you swear the testimony or about to show me the truth?
I do.
And that was our planner and our...
Engineering.
Engineering consultant. Kevin, those four waiver requests, do you have any comments on them, whether they can supply those during the course of the hearing through testimony, or whether they need to... Is there anything that substantial enough that would prevent the board from moving forward?
Not in my opinion, Mr. Rego.
So question on... I think we said it's on the completeness review, and so I'm assuming that if it has a W next to it, that's a waiver.
Yeah, the bottom of each, two, and the bottom of each.
And I don't know if something's changed, but I'm counting five, not four.
It should be 10, 22, 24, 25.
Well, there's five Ws, that's all I can tell you. 26, 25, 24, 22, and 10. That's what I see, unless the documents change.
26.
The ones I identified, Chairman, are... This is referring to the completeness review dated the 14th of June, as well as the zoning review also dated the 14th of June. The zoning review item, oops, it should be...
Okay, so then I have an outdated document. This is a old...
Yes, that was revised, Chairman.
Okay, sorry.
So the four waivers that are identified are 10, which is setback and outlines of adjacent buildings, 22, which is existing and proposed utility lines, 24, existing and proposed sanitary sewage system, and 25, water supply system and other utilities. These have been requested. I don't see any problems with them, because this is an existing building that's going to be expanded, and I presume testimony is going to establish that the existing utilities will be carried over. I'm gonna defer to Mr. Quaidov in just a second, but I will point out that Item 7 should be... Should the board... Any subsequent action taken by this board should include that the site plan be revised to correct the zones. The applicant has listed non-existent zone districts, I imagine, prior to our 2015 ordinance change, and that needs to be revised, should any further action be taken on this application. Mr. Quaidov, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
I have no issues with any of these waivers. I did have a comment in my letter about how any of the additional utilities, any will be connected, there was a connection, as long as they provide testimony to that, I'm satisfied.
So I do have an issue with Number 10. Why would we not want to see the setback and outlines of adjacent buildings and budding streets within 200 feet? To me, that's an important thing to see and know, how this building will look in relation to adjacent buildings.
Will that be covered in testimony?
It will be covered in testimony, and one of the sketches that we have shows a joint building.
Okay.
And there are setbacks substantial for that, and the new proposal will probably be either... For the new proposal, we cannot approach upon us to the setback. So we don't need a variance, a setback variance. For variance, we need some building...
You need lot coverage?
The building, not appropriate, it's the building percentage and market. Those are clear.
Okay.
If the board decide...
And Mr. Anderson just indicated that the aerial key map also does show the setback to the joint block.
Okay.
Then the board should also know, if we decide to move ahead, which it sounds likely will, that if something comes up during the hearing, you want more information, you're entitled to have more information on it.
There you go.
So that's not a problem. So maybe we take a voice vote on the waivers? It seems like we can live without...
Board members, are we okay with granting the waivers requested? Anyone object? Seems like we're good.
Okay.
All right, let me call my first witness, Mr. Jubal Lot.
Sir, if you could raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you were about to give, show me the truth?
Yeah, I do.
Could you spell both your first and last name, please?
Jane Neil, G like George, A L, and last name L A D D A.
D?
D like Davis. D like Davis A.
Thank you.
Mr. Lot, what do you desire?
I desire a little bit of majority at 58 Laugh and Drive.
And what's your relationship with the applicant at 50 Bowright Avenue?
I'm a managing member.
And what about Reliance Grant? What's Reliance Grant?
Reliance Grant is a wholesale grant that is returning in the northeast.
And is that the sole tenant of 50 Bowright LLC?
Yes, Reliance Grant is now the sole tenant.
And are you the president of Reliance Grant?
Yes, I am the president.
All right, and how long ago did you form Reliance Grant?
It was formed in 2006.
And prior to... And when did you purchase the property at 50 Bowright?
In 2015.
And prior to that, where did you operate out of?
I was operating in Union, right off of Route 22.
Now, when, back in 2015, when you purchased the property, did you come before this board?
Yes, I did come before the board.
And at that time, did you require a use variance?
Yes, I do.
And at that time, did you have two different uses, or were you proposing two different uses? One, an existing storage business, and the other one, your business...
My business, yes, exactly.
Okay, and is that storage business still in existence?
No, we have like a phase, a phase recall completely. A couple of tenants were there, but they were also gone. We were about to remove, we wanted to use Reliance Grant in our...
And the building itself, what's your vision, or not only your vision of your operation, what has your operation been since you've been at 50 Bowright? Can you explain how it works?
Since we moved to 50 Bowright here, the business has been growing, and we have been distributing in the northeast area all the natural stones, and also we are expanding into the floating gallery, and for that, we need some space.
And is it your operation such that your intention is to have all of this stored within the building on-site?
Exactly. We want everything to be stored inside, so we don't have to leave anything outside.
And have you constructed within the building various cranes that move the slabs from one location to another?
Yes, we do, we did.
How many employees do you have on-site?
28. On-site, we have 14, the total are 28. 14 of them are on the road, and 14 inside office.
And has that changed at all since you've established the business?
Yes, we were from six when we started in 2006, now we are 28. And when I moved in 2015, we had like 24 employees, now we are 28. And those are outside salespeople that we have added.
And, but on-site, there's only 14, is that correct?
On-site, we have 14 employees.
Now, when you first proposed, I think before this board, you had proposed to extend the building out about 19 feet, is that correct?
Yes.
And you granted that variance?
Yes.
And was that... And was your intention at that point in time to get offices in that area?
So in the front, we wanted to add offices and also the showroom in that time.
And right now, with the expansion that you're requesting, is there gonna be offices in there, or is it gonna be all stored?
All storage.
All right. And again, to be... If the application is approved, and are you gonna have any additional employees on-site?
No, we don't expect any additional employees. Probably we will have the business that's good, outside salespeople to represent our company.
Now, do you sell retail?
No, we can, we are wholesale operations.
And now, how many parking spaces are on the property right now?
I guess we have about...
So right now, how many parking spaces do you have?
30.
And what are you proposing?
42.
And are the 30 foot, the 34 that you have, is that sufficient for the...
We do not use any of 34. We need 14 for our employees, and some of them are fully, and when the customers come to see the material, we have more than enough. Most of the parking spaces we can get in.
All right, and, but you'll be adding additional parking spaces anyways, is that correct?
Yeah.
Because one of your proposals here is to remove the 13...
Carriages. Carriages, yes, exactly.
Now that, then you can park cars in front of that.
In fact, we will gain more, 13 or 14 more spaces in that place.
Now, what are your hours of operation?
Monday through Thursday, 9 to 6. Fridays, 9 to 5. Saturdays, 9 to 2. Sundays, 10 to 1.
And is this the same hours of operation that you proposed back in 2015, that were embodied in the resolution?
Yeah, it was the same. On Sunday, we were from 10 to 12:30 earlier, but now 10:30 to 1. That's the small change. Again, hours of operation are the same.
And what was your Saturday, what were your Saturday hours, sir?
9 to 2.
All right, so it's 9 to 6, 9 to 5, 9 to 2, and 10:30 to...
10:30 to 1.
1, thank you.
Now, when you came before the board back in 2015, and I think based upon the ordinance, there was approximately 178, there were 76 parking spaces which were required, but the board granted the variances at that point to just, I think, require 42 spaces. All that, yeah, okay. And one of the things that the board, as well as the professionals, the town professionals pointed out, that you didn't want to have parking spaces in the front of the building, correct? When I said, I talked about 40.
Right, right in print of the houses, there are residential houses, so it does not bother them in any way, so that's why we propose that we can have some salvation of that.
And there's a tree line, is that correct?
There is a tree line, right in print.
And Mr. Anderson will talk about the new type of landscape.
Exactly.
Do you expect any additional bathrooms or anything like that to be installed?
Not only rehab, or any of that, but right now.
So there wouldn't be any changes to the utilities?
No changes to the...
I have no further questions of this, Lot.
Professionals, do you have any questions of... Mr. Ryan?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Lotta, you stated that there's no retail sales...
No retail sales.
...on the site, but you did just mention that customers visit. Could you explain that?
Yeah, so what happens is, as I explained earlier too, is the fabricator sends the customer to build the slab, so when they don't have the material there on-site, they will come down here to build the full slab to make sure that the slab that they are seeing is the one that they want to put it on, they're on their ground. So they come, they approve the stone, they don't approve the stone. That is what we do.
Do you have any idea of how many people would visit you in the course of a day or a week?
During the busy time, we get like Monday through Friday, five to six customers. On Saturdays, we get about 18 to 20 customers. And on Sundays, again, eight to 10 customers.
Per day?
Per day.
Per day. Will you have enough of parking available for the staff and the customers that come?
Yeah, we do. During the Saturdays, the customers are spread out. Now we have the point make system, so we spread them out, so at any point of time, we have ample parking spots there.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Quaidov?
We said that this addition is for the storage of additional materials. When I was at the site today, there seemed to be quite a bit of materials around the perimeter.
Okay, so if you see, like, we have the tiles and all those, during the summertime, we were trying to get rid of it, so we wanted to make a tent kind of cell, and that didn't happen, so that's why we want to make sure that it goes back inside the building. We have ample room again to store back, but like moving the tiles in and out, the pallets break down, and tend to fall, and they tend to break, so we kept it outside for sale.
break down and tend to fall and they tend to break, so we kept it outside for sale.
So what's this addition is?
It is there, but anyway, like in, uh, as the winter is coming in, the material is going to be stored back inside, and once this addition is done, we will not have that kind of issue at all moving forward.
And that also includes the two large storage containers that are located on the...
Exactly.
Those will be moved?
Those will be removed completely, yes.
Mr. Ryan, any question?
Our story is not permitted.
Right, our story is not permitted, so we will...
Thank you. Board members, anyone have any questions for? Sure, Mr. Ray.
Mr. Latta, just so I understand, you, your business is the, the storage and distribution of stone slabs?
Yes.
Natural stone?
Natural stones, industrial stones.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you do any work inside the building, like cutting the stone?
No, no cutting of stone. It comes pre-cut.
Pre-cut?
Pre-cut.
Okay, so...
So that's why the customer comes to see the full slabs, uh, for them to make sure that it is the same material stone that is going to go for their cutting here.
Okay.
To the fabricators.
So there's not stone fragments flying around or anything like that?
Nothing, nothing of that stone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So my next witness is Mr. Paul Anderson.
About, are they public? Do you want to do public for him or no? Mr. Anderson, we see each other again.
Yes, it's been a long time.
Twenty-four hours. I'm tired of seeing you, okay? If you can imagine. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you were about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Okay, uh, state your name, say your last name, please.
Paul David Anderson, A N D E R S O N.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Anderson, what is your profession?
I'm a licensed engineer and planner.
And have you been licensed in both in the state of New Jersey?
I am licensed as an engineer and planner in New Jersey, both licenses are valid and...
Have you ever testified as an expert at planning and/or engineering before?
Yes, many times. In fact, I testified on a two thousand and fifteen application on both of those issues.
And were you accepted by this board?
Yes, I was.
As an expert in both engineering and planning?
That's correct.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the board accept Mr. Anderson's credentials, accept him as an expert both in planning and engineering. Board members, are okay?
Yes.
This is fine, proceed.
Okay, um, then, Mr. Anderson, um... So I just have my drawings that were submitted, so I may need to refer to them or point to something. When I, if I put it over here, do I have to bring a microphone with me if I go over and point to something?
Maybe you can grab on the desk.
No, okay.
Wrap it on the table? Yeah, you will have to speak into the mic, otherwise, you won't be heard.
Okay.
Or would you be more comfortable just standing there?
Can you use one of those persons?
I can do that, but I don't know if they work. Start there, go here?
They work, oh, okay. So you can talk to the mic that's on the table there, then?
Over here?
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Mrs. Skedere.
Fine. Oh. Nobody trick.
It would not be a good...
It's like a mount jack. Throw it in, redo their insurance. You need those clamps.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Anderson, can you tell us, first of all, what's the lot and block number of the site?
If I may interrupt, Mr. Anderson, if you come to a drawing that we have not been provided with, we'll have to mark it, if we've already been provided with it, we can just move ahead.
These are all the drawings that were, exactly, this is the...
Good.
No colorization, nothing?
We're good, thank you.
Okay, so this property is known as Block Six, Lot Six. It's three point one acres in size. It's located in the industrial zone. Currently, it has a seventy-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-one square foot building on it. It has frontage here on Fourteenth Street, and it has frontage on Bowright on the, on the, I think it's on the north side, and then on the, on the south side is the frontage on Lafayette Street. So we have three front yards on this application. Properties on the west side are industrial, and properties on the east side are, east side of this are residential. So you have a residential zone across the street. Currently, the parking and loading for this property is primarily off of Lafayette, and that's going to be a continuation with this proposal. So the applicant proposes to, see if I got it here, this is the site plan and the set submitted. Uh, applicant proposes two additions to the building. The first is an eighty-six hundred and eighty-one square foot building on the front, on the north Fourteenth Street fudge. It's setback twenty-three point two feet, where fifteen feet is required, is the required The second is an approximately thirty-six hundred square foot addition that is in the place where the existing storage buildings were, and again, that's just going to be a full height addition to this building as opposed to separate storage units built in front of the building. So they both meet the front yard setback performance, one to Lafayette, where that is, is thirty-one point nine feet, where fifteen is required, and like I said previously, twenty-three point two feet, where fifteen is required and where fourteen. Both additions are, as Jugal indicated, for additional warehouse storage of the granite, marble, and engineered stone. The addition to, on North Fourteenth Street will have no new vehicle access to it, it's just the building pushing forward, uh, towards the setback, and with all of the access to that storage space from the inside of the building. One of the reasons when, uh, Jugal came to me and said he wanted to pursue this project, he asked, how far can we go to the, the front? I need a lot of space, as much space as I can, can get. And I said, well, you can go to the fifteen foot point, and that, you'd not need relief with that, but you have these majestic trees that are out in front on North Fourteenth Street that create a beautiful streetscape, and...
How many trees are there, by the way?
I got one, two, three, I got five.
And approximately how tall are those trees?
Uh, I, I don't know the height, but they're mature, eighty, eighty foot high trees, they're with beautiful canopies, and they are very nice trees that should be maintained. And then the second fact...
But let me just interrupt you one second while we're talking about the trees. Do you also propose additional plantings in the front there?
Yeah, we, in addition to those trees, we have some foundation plantings in the front that will, you know, buffer the lower portion of the new building. So the, the second factor in my answer to Jugal, how much building we can get in the front, was that there's the white industry is building across the street, which has a front yard setback also. So we were looking at maintaining this, this front, this street, uh, streetscape with a consistent frontage with, uh, the, the industrial use next door and maintaining the trees, so that we had a nice uniform ride down the street, it wasn't in and out with buildings, and it wasn't, you know, coming out as far as we could, uh, because that would probably taken the roots out on the entire side of that, and the trees would have been lost. So we, we think that this maintains the character of the neighborhood, so that's why I recommended Jugal forty-five, about a forty-five foot wide addition, and he agreed and thought that was a good reasoning. Now, we have, with this building, as was indicated, there's no new utilities, no new bathrooms, everything's in the existing building, this is just storage space, so there's no new utility connections. We do have roof leaders on the outside, we want to consider them utilities, and those are designed to connect to the inlet on, on Bowright Avenue directly, so that we don't have any drainage, any water that hits to the front of the building will flow overland with the grating we have in both directions around the building in its natural drainage path. This is in terms of your drainage ordinance, this is a minor project, it doesn't have over a quarter acre of new impervious, and it doesn't have an acre of disturbance, so there's no detention required, so we just made a direct connection to the, to the street inlet and control the, controlled the, the surface flow of the water to prevent erosion.
Now, you need a building, uh, variance, is that correct? A building, you need a variance for, for building size, correct?
I, I'm getting to that.
Oh.
I'll get to that. One of the comments in the report was, with regard to this addition in the front, was that there's lighting on the front, which I have shown on the layout plan, and it asks what the purpose of these surface mount lights are, and they're basically, they're just security lighting. Now, um, if there is a problem with this being too much light, we can either reduce the number of, of lights, or we could eliminate them entirely, or have some kind of function on them where they're, you know, motion censored or something like that. Uh, but we're not, we do not need them for pedestrian pathways, so it can be a darker section, and I think the reason, the question is obvious, is this red from the street from residential zone, so it might be appropriate, at least after, you know, closing hours, that it's, that it's turned off, but you lose the security factor. But it was only, uh, security lighting was the only reason for that. Also, we probably do need to add, if we take them from here, we do need to probably add them back over here with the new addition, we did not model, uh, new lights on the new addition, there was some existing lights that, in fact, we believe are adequate, but we're not going to pull the old lights out and put them on the new building, we're going to probably put new lights on, so that has to be modeled as part of, of this plan. Now, as also was mentioned, is, once we get rid of the multiple doors here with this storage facility, we're able to add additional parking spaces, and that helps us with our deficiency in parking, we have a requirement of a hundred and seventy-six parking spaces by the ordinance, and we propose forty-two. There's thirty-four existing, uh, as Mr. Latta indicated, that it's a very low intensity use in terms of the number of people that are there at any one time, from him and his employees to, uh, you know, the, the people picking up the, the raw stones, to the people viewing the stones, there's never, uh, in the last five or six years, that he hasn't had any experience where he did not have enough parking, that was with thirty-four. So forty-two will be that much better, it's on existing asphalt, we're just taking the asphalt that was there already and turning it from a driveway to a storage facility and just making it a parking. So we do require a variance for that, and then the second variance is for, for building coverage, fifty-five percent is required in the I-zone, we're currently at fifty-eight percent, and we're proposing with these, with this addition, the front, this one is basically a replacement of sixty-four point seven percent, and that would give a building of eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two square feet.
Is it true that you do not need an impervious coverage of that?
Correct, we conform with all the other home standards in terms of setback, impervious coverage, uh, the only two things that we need variances for are the parking and the, and the building coverage.
Now, um, in terms of, now, I'll ask you to put your planning out.
Sure.
In terms of, of the statute, this, these are, both of these variances will be C-two variances, is that correct?
Well, they're, they're C variances, and I think C-two is the applicable proof for these, the flexible C. I think this industrial building in industrial zone with this use is particularly well-suited. Uh, it does have, like I just mentioned, a particular lower density compared to the other industrial uses, uh, and has a minimal environmental impact, and, and it has very easy access to Route twenty-two. And if you look at those factors, that goes directly towards, uh, the, the purpose of this zone, you know, which was indicated in your planning report. All those factors which we are providing are exactly what is intended for the uses in the industrial zone. It's a, it's a clean industrial use, low intensity, low impact to the neighborhood, with, you know, meeting the setbacks, providing adequate air open, air, airway and open space to all the adjoining, the square footage is higher than permitted, but it, it, it functions well, and it's a business that has been growing, which is, which, from what I read in your master plan, in the ordinance, the borough wants to encourage strong, growing industrial uses and other uses that are going to be able to be here and maintain themselves for a long period of time, and be viable members of the community.
And when you're mentioning the master plan, it's specifically something about page twenty-two of the master plan, which reflects the goals of the industrial use?
Yes, uh, that, that's correct. Uh, it, it does promote the, the master plan goals, as a second, second element of this, this use actually does promote the industrial, everybody taking advantage of the transportation, and, and certainly, when Chris gets up and shows the building, the new building addition on the front will increase, it will improve the architectural appearance of it, so that will also meet the master plan goal of upgrading the appearance of the industrial zone, and getting all of the, you know, any of the storage inside the building, and with two new dumpster locations that, with dumpster enclosures, which will more readily control the, you know, the, the waste area around the building, will, will make this entire property much more, you know, attractive. Yes, sir?
How many loading days do you have and where do they load in?
We have, uh, we, with this new addition, we have one door that goes into the building and ramp up, and I believe we have two doors here. Chris can probably address more how many existing doors are, are here, we have on the other side another ramp and loading dock on the existing building already, and those are well-used, but I, I think when you see the architectural plans, they'll, they'll illustrate exactly where they are a little bit better than my site plans can.
With the increase in size, more, if someone coming in and come out, will there be more trucks coming down and waiting, or maybe...
Well, they have the ability to get in and, you know, faster, because they don't have to wait, you know, and somebody can come in and pick up stone, say somebody comes in with their truck to pick up stone and take to a, a job site, they can drive right into the building and get loaded inside the building and not have to wait for the guy in front of them, because we have a second ramp. So, I mean, it adds some functionality in that regard, too. Uh, so I think that instead of it creating more backups, it's probably going to reduce anything, but I'm not really aware that there's any backups, anytime I've been there, it's been fairly mild activity with no real blockages in the street and so forth. The other, the other element to the, to the variance proof for C-two is that it promotes portions of the municipal land use law, it provides sufficient space and appropriate locations for, for various uses, and this certainly is providing space in this location for this, this use, which is appropriate to your zone. Uh, it, it's also encourages location-designed transportation routes will promote free flow of traffic, being near twenty-two, it's an ideal location for an industrial use like this, because it has easy access to a state highway, and certainly, purpose I with this are the visual environment. So I, I believe that if you look at the flexible C criteria, the thousand criteria is certainly, is certainly very high. Uh, if you look at the negative criteria, uh, the parking required, uh, onsite is, is unnecessary, uh, we have forty-two proposed, and that we believe is more than sufficient, and there's no need to further burden the site with adding additional impervious, uh, or going anywhere else, you know, into the front to develop more parking. Uh, so I, I don't think that there's a significant need for parking, and there's very little detriment associated with having a reduced number of parking spaces for this use.
And of course, if you added more parking, that would obviously require greater impervious coverage and... coverage, and that creates?
It would require additional relief. And so basically, if you look at this, adding this additions here within the setbacks, I believe it, it really has no significant detriment to, you know, for the park, parking and building coverage on this application does not provide a significant detriment to the zone plan or ordinance. So when you balance the two, what we're getting here is an additional, the additional building and a much more viable industrial use in the site. The benefits greatly outweigh the detriments, the detriments are very few for this use, and I believe that you could grant this variance without a substantial detriment to the public good. You also grant them without substantial detriment to the zone plan or ordinance, as it supports the master plan goals. It meets the purpose of the ordinance for this zone, and it, you know, it also, you know, it's just, it just, and it meets the purposes that I know you want. So that is my testimony about this application, and I'd be happy to take any questions that any of the board members or public have.
Is that a question? I'm not clear on your testimony regarding the lighting out front. Was it a sign of progress?
The lights, the lights in front of the building, we have shown on the plan, and there was a comment from either your engineer or planner said, what's the purpose of this? There's no sidewalks here, why is it here? And I agree, it's a very good comment in terms of, you know, why do we have it there? Well, it's for security. Maybe it's overdone for security because it's designed as if it was a parking lot or had a walkway there, and there's no intention of having it there. So I basically was indicating that if the board thinks that the comment from their professional is correct, and maybe we can remove that from the plan, then we'd be happy to remove that from the plan. Then the other element of lighting we talked about was the, on the addition in the back off of Lafayette, where we have not shown new lights, but we probably will want to add them, and they would be similar to the ones we already show on the front because that's what fits with the architecture of the building.
Are there three lights right now?
There's one on this corner, I believe. I don't show them or model them in my, my analysis, but there are two there. So it's not completely dark in terms of security.
Any questions from our professionals? Let's witness, no?
I got, I got, the applicant and the engineer answered some of the comments in my letter. If you don't mind, you can go through the rest.
Sure.
And you can, you know, address them and make some clarification. I should, if you were the architect, but the architectural then still show the storage, storage bits. But they, from what you have said, if these are going away, it's going to be a full facade. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're not having, is that an existing conditions plan?
This is the proposed architectures. Those elevations still shows the?
Well, those, those storage buildings that are here that are existing are going forward.
Okay. Staying with that, the parking along the west Philly side that is being restripped, I recommend that that become a one-way, because it's angled. And then the parking along the new addition, like the south, the southwest corner, corner, you have a perpendicular parking, but you only have a 14-foot access to, from the empty space to the private.
That's correct.
And unless you want to make that one-way, too, that is not completely fine, it's deprived, meaning the ordinance, right? I believe it's 24 feet.
Yeah, we would look for relief on that. So that has historically been people parking in front of their storage unit, okay? And they pulled in there off the street, and then they just backed out into the street after they were done. And there's not enough space to have a 24-foot aisle. So what we're proposing is to continue to use the asphalt, not for parking in front of a storage unit, you know, but, but just, you know, in front of a fixed building, not in front of doors. So, I mean, that, if that requires a design waiver or something, that we would, we would request that design waiver. And in terms of how busy Lafayette is, there's really not a significant amount of traffic we're backing out, it's going to be a difficult maneuver.
Can you revise the inventory a lot, and you can also show all the local fast firms, because I think it shows the access to, to some of these new parking spaces.
Yes.
Also, I'd like, I recommend adding a note saying that any pavement curbing sidewalk that's in disrepair on-site, be repaired, and a note should be added.
Sure.
I noticed that you have a retaining wall along one of these new, I guess, the new looking area that's where the?
Where the ramp goes up into the building, yes.
And if you could provide detail?
It's more of a, it's going to be really connected to the building.
Okay.
So I would assume that that's going to be, when it gets to the point where they submit plans to the building department for approval, that that is part of the building itself. But it's basically a pump-free retaining wall is what we envision there, you know, in this real application.
So do you want details or no?
I still like, it'd be when you provide clients works for buildings like that.
Okay. So if I was to give you something that showed it visually and left a structural design to the person designing the building, additions, would that be satisfied?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
My next comment has to do with, well, I agree with your assessment that this is not a major development, this is not a quarter of an acre of impervious, there's not an acre of service. This is also a major site where presently there's 2.35 acres of impervious there. And you didn't say, and is there an existing detention system on this site right now?
There is none.
There is not? Okay. So even though it's not a major, I still recommend some sort of underground detention to attenuate the site, because this is a huge site, this is giving, I mean, if this was a new site, you would have had to fit this, you would have to fit some sort of detention. I mean, the fact that it's existing now, and you're increasing about 0.2 acres of additional impervious, you're adding, you're removing green space, you're adding more impervious, additional runoff to go off-site into a drainage system that, or kind of work is undersized. And every, you know, any time someone does any type of application for counter, and they're making an increase, even if it's slightly, we want to try to reduce runoff for, for counter.
So what standard would you think you'd draw?
For this, that you propose be less than the existing runoff.
Okay. All right. We'll design something that throws some stored water into the ground in a pipe and discharges it to the same location.
And you're basically talking about the 8,000?
The, the 8,000, okay, addition.
Yeah, just, just for the 8,000 addition, which is the new one.
Or I would, I would be okay with that, but at least that. And the last comment I have has to do with the landscaping, just to do a warranty for at least a year, follow the landscape.
That's fine.
And provide a cost estimate for all the improvements of our bombing services by the?
Of course.
And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
I would just point out, I did have a number of comments on my report, but I'll wait for the conclusion of full testimony and face this up. Stay with me.
Thank you. Board members have any questions before this witness? Could you raise your right hand, please, when you're ready? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth? Thank you. Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Christopher Simzak.
Okay. S-Y-Z-N-C.
S-Z.
Y.
N.
Right. N-C.
No, N is in my.
M is in?
Michael. Yes. N-C.
Smith.
Z-A-K.
Thank you.
Smith.
Chris, maybe you may want to go by the sketch. Mr. Smith.
Chris, you have several photographs, some of those were submitted, I think, with the application. Maybe if you could start with the, if you could go to the upper, well, wait.
You want to, you want to qualify me?
Yeah, let me do that first, I'm sorry. Are you a member of any profession?
I'm a registered architect in New Jersey.
Okay. And have you ever testified before a board before as an architect?
Yes, I have.
And approximately how many times?
10 to 15 times.
Have you ever testified before this board?
No.
The reason I ask that is, at the last application, he thought it was before this board, it turned out it was another member of the firm, so we had a little discussion about that, so he wanted to, just some embarrassers. And, all right, Chris, if you would, at this point, I would ask that the board accept that Mr. Simzak has said.
Board members okay with Chris presenting? Okay, proceed. Excuse me, do we have all these photos? I know we have some.
I don't think so, he said that, yeah, so we have to mark.
Why don't we mark the board as A1, containing seven?
Photos?
All those photos?
Yeah.
And when you're done marking it, Mr. Smith, if you could tell us who took them
Okay, some of these were taken, I'm going to say, when I did the drawings several months ago. So they were, they're within the last year.
But they're accurate as to what's there now?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Chris, if you would start with looking at the sketch, the upper right-hand corner, if you can also, that photograph.
Okay, so here we're standing on 14th Street, looking at the, this is Bowright, the street is Bowright here. This is the front corner of the building. So the residential is to the left side of this, in this photograph. So you do not see the trees on this side.
You go to the one, I guess.
This is a picture from the other side, so this is Lafayette Street, and 14th Street is here. So this is, this is an indication between the current trees and the current existing building.
And the lower, right-hand side of the door of the sketch?
This is from, again, this is a further away version of this, and I'm showing the building to the north, and the relationship between these two buildings. And this is what the building next to it, on the other side of Bowright, looks like.
Now, the buildings on either side of 14th Bowright, do they project closer to 14th Street?
Yes, if you look at the, I guess you can see that in this photo, this aerial view, you can see this is the building to the north side, this is the building to the south side, and right now, we are further back from the street than these two buildings are.
And with the new addition, as was testified by Mr. Anderson, it will be roughly contiguous with those other buildings?
Correct. We're bringing, bringing this, this wall is coming out 45 feet towards the street, so it'll be, sorry, it's hard to point here, it'll be, you know, close to the edge of the canopy of the trees.
And the center, lower photograph, what does that indicate?
This is further down, south down 14th Street, so this is the building across Lafayette Street. So this is our subject building in the middle here. So again, these are the trees, and then this is the residential area on the right side.
And what about on the upper-left hand corner of the sketch? What is that photograph?
This photo is the current condition of the storage units on the back corner of the building. These are really, I'm going to say they were temporary, storage units for a storage building that we proposed to take these down and extend this building out to the same line of construction.
And what is the next photograph below that show?
It's, it's just a, a photo further up Lafayette, towards 14th Street. So this is just, just a head-on view of all the storage units that we'd like to take down.
And there were approximately 13, is it 13?
Yeah, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13.
And they're going to be removed, and a ramp is going to be installed, where one of them would be, and a loading system.
So I'll go to the building plans for that, this is.
Why don't you explain to the board what you proposed?
Okay, so the existing perimeter of the building is essentially to remain, this is the 45-foot addition on the 14th Street side, and then this is where the current storage lockers are, and we propose to take this wall and basically move it down south towards, towards Lafayette Street.
And that be contiguous with the facade going toward 14th Street?
Yes, if you look at the entire design of the building, it's meant to, you know, the materials used on the existing buildings, we have standing seam metal above, we have brick below with some pilasters of stucco. We plan to continue that material usage, and we're going to have brick and then standing seam up here. In addition to, this is our addition to the front, those will be the same materials that are on the existing building, just to make this, give it a uniform appearance.
Now, the addition in the front, will that be the same height as the existing building?
Yes, this, this is going to match exactly with the existing building. Even our new building back here is going to be the same height as, as the existing building.
And can you, with regard to the proposed facade on 14th Street, can you tell us what perhaps one of those?
So right now, we are designing this to be the same materials that are on the side of the building. It is going to wrap around the front. We have brick on the, on the lower half, which will match the existing building, and the standing seam on the upper half will match the existing building. And there's punched windows every so often, just to bring light into the, into the storage, so people can view the slabs with natural light coming in.
And again, is there any entrance way on 14th Street?
None, no.
Is there any improvement going to be made to the west elevation?
The, the west elevation, no.
Okay.
No. The existing office space is going to remain as is, and, you know, this whole elevation is going to remain, and we're just extending it to the front 45 feet.
And the interior of the addition is just going to be a two-story, that's?
Two-story. When we did the submission back in 2015, we had proposed a loft here, and that was going to be stored, you know, as Drew, Mr. Alada testified, it was going to be offices, and I think he was going to put a showroom. We're not going to do that anymore, so this is one level, just an expansion. We're taking the existing wall, existing wall of the outside of the building will come down, and the crane system that he has in here now, running from side to side, will be extended. be extended, so he can get his slabs up and move where he needs them.
All right, anything else you want to tell the board about, maybe you can start?
The use of, I just want to explain this a little bit. Right now, the way I see this being used is, these three doors are down at a lower level, and inside there is a loading dock. And they pull up storage containers, shipping containers, they will inside the building, and that's where they're unloaded and loaded. These two doors here, you have to come up the ramp to get onto the level of the warehouse, and that's where product is loaded onto trucks that go out for fabrication. The two new doors that we're proposing over here, one is at a loading dock height, so somebody can back a truck up and unload or load from this new, this warehouse, and the other one is a ramp, so we can get the truck inside and use, you know, forklifts or whatever to load product onto the trucks inside the building. So I just wanted to explain that a little bit.
How many bays would exist with the new proposal, on the, I guess that would be the south elevation? Yes?
How many bays total?
Yeah.
We have the two new, we have three, four, five, and there is one of, closer to the front of the building that's existing, that's going to remain. So six, seven, we will have a total of eight.
And that is all for loading and unloading the stone inside of the building, right?
Yes. Whether they, you drive the truck in, or you back up into, the only one that has the loading dock outside is, is this one. And that's where the truck can only back up to the building edge here and load outside here.
So the other ones, the trucks would actually go?
Go inside the building. All, all of them, even, even the ones that have the loading dock here, the loading dock is 40, 40 foot inside the building, so the containers actually go in the building to get unloaded and loaded.
Will there be a ramp to pull down to it for?
In these three?
Well, wherever the larger truck you mentioned, I assume, tractor trailer.
It is sloped inside the building.
Oh, inside the building, okay. Not on the outside.
What happens with grade is, the slab of the, of the building, grade is up high, so this actually is buried a little bit below grade, and grade slopes down, so by the time you get to the back of the building, we need to have a loading dock, and there's a little loading dock that you drive up for these two doors to get into the building also. So grade is sloping down just a little bit. So we will need a ramp to get into the building here, to drive it.
Right, now, I was thinking if, I thought you said that one would be like an exterior loading, and so I was thinking.
This is, this is four feet. We're showing this is four feet from grade to the, to the floor of the warehouse there.
And that would be where the ramp?
The, the one to the left is, has a ramp, and this one is just a loading, a loading dock.
Okay.
And the whole concept again is to have all of this, the entire operation, within the confines of the building, exactly?
That, that's the intent. The, you know, the slabs are very heavy, the crane system is on rails up, up at the roofline, so, you know, having this extra space is, is pretty helpful for the, for the business to move product, store product in this area.
I have no further questions.
Professional, wait, Mr. Clemente. Professionals, do you have any questions?
Mr. Mike Council, I have a number of questions in my report, but they have not been addressed yet. I'll leave that to, we'll let the, I'll recall.
Mr. Quaid, did you say you had some questions for this?
No.
No, okay. Board members, Mr. Clemente?
Just noticed that there's a sign in the front of Fourteenth Street, it's going to be the same type of sign that's going on the addition.
Right now, we have a sign up on the building here, up high. We have a sign here, and we have a sign on the, on the north wall. And right now, that sign has two tenants, so it shows the storage units and relying, you know, grant. And so, since the storage unit is gone, we only need one, one tenant shown on that sign, but it will be only one per, per elevation.
And that sign will be informal to the, to the ordinance, correct?
Any other questions from board members? Okay, Mr. Brian.
To follow up on the signs that I mentioned, so the new signs will be placed on the new addition?
On the new addition, correct.
Will the new signs be lighted?
That's a good question. I'm not sure we got into that, that level of design. They're, I don't think, they're currently not lighted.
I'm sorry. My client just applies that they will not be lighted. So will the signs be the same, new signs, will they be the same size as the old signs, even though there's only one tenant now, or will they be smaller?
They will be probably to the maximum conforming size that he can, he can fit on the building.
Since their, Mr. Quaid has pointed out that there are major revised plans anyway, would you be able to show those signs on revised plans?
Sure. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. All right, I think board members had any questions, so, Mr. Demasi?
Okay, Mr. Anderson, if you could come on back up, so I asked some questions.
Mancha?
Yes, Mr. Brian.
Thank you. I'm referring to page three of my report. I am C for Charlie one. A buffer is required by the ordinance. Is the applicant seeking a design waiver on that?
Yes, dear.
Can you explain why?
Because I thought of the foundation plant and then just the insurance street line, it would be a sufficient buffer to the residential uses across the street. She have the space to add the 15-foot plantings, and even, and wanted to create some kind of planted buffer, but I think that is not necessary.
You testified previously about the existing five trees along North Fourteenth. Do you believe there'll be any effect upon those trees from the addition?
No, I don't. We've put the addition outside the root zone of the dirt-lined tree, so I think that there'll be little of any impact.
Several of my remaining questions deal with the impact of the residences that are across the street, and I've indicated that you're now coming 45 feet closer to those residences. Previous testimony has shown that you're now in line with the northly and southerly industrial building, however, the southerly industrial building is across the street from another industrial or commercial building. So actually, you're coming closer to the residences than what currently exists. So I am concerned about the lighting. The applicant has indicated that they're willing to adjust that lighting. I think it's overlit right now, but I think that having some kind of lighting there, and I don't want to say landscape lighting, because I'm just going to shoot right up to the sky, but something that comes down with less intensity, perhaps fewer fixtures, to give people an idea that if something's happening there between the, both bushes and the building. My suggestion, I defer to the two reports depending upon what you would like, but I think less lighting would be appropriate, and if plans are going to be revised, perhaps they can look at revised lighting.
We have no problem. As indicated before, we would even eliminate it, although I don't think it makes sense, because we want to secure it. We'll look at that.
I would agree with Mr. Demasi on that. Perhaps the board will allow a, what about conditions later? The existing industrial-looking building is going to be extended around North Fourteenth Street. The urban design standards do call for breaking up undifferentiated facades. This is a very long facade along North Fourteenth. It's got some windows across the top, but nothing that really breaks up that mess.
Mr. Brian, we may be able to address that. Let me ask Chris to come back up here, because the original design that we had in 2015 kind of mirrors Mr. Brian's comments, and if you can even do that if board wants.
Yeah, I was going to say, actually, for me, that was one of my big issues. If you take a look at the access storage building on the Kennelworth Boulevard, when that was put up, there was a lot of concern, you know, that's a gateway into Kennelworth, that there was just going to be this massive cement structure, and if you were to take a look at that, you see that they added brick dividers across the front to try and soften that massive facade, and I kind of feel that we have a similar situation here.
Mr. Chairman, we have that old sketch, Chris can show us. More of the, for that?
If you want to see what was submitted last time?
Yeah.
So, this, this was a submit, you want to mark this as a?
If it was submitted, no.
No, this was submitted, this is a previous approval.
Why don't we mark it then? A2, what, previous facade, front facade?
So, the, the idea, this is, this is the elevation that was facing Fourteenth. Again, we were approved for a two-story, and, and there was going to be offices and showroom in here, so we, we really dressed this up a little bit more. The function was a little bit different back then. So, we, we really tried to make it look, you know, pretty fancy. It's just, this is not the plan that we're, we're going with at this point. There's no need, he is good with the office that he has at the back of the building, he doesn't need to bring people around to the front of the building, so we're trying to minimize, you know, the impact on, on everybody else around. So, now, the design of the, aesthetically, the design of the building now, proposed, we do have piers, every, at every bay, so approximately 40 feet, we're going to stucco piers. The lower portion is brick, the upper portion is standing seam, and there is, you know, to match the existing building, two tones for the, the color scheme, but it is an industrial building, so I, you know, if, if we could play with heights of bands, if you would, if that's an issue, heights of the roof, you know, but there is a sufficient buffer that with the trees out in front of, of this, you cannot really see this building clearly from the residential section.
Trees are not permanent fixtures, unfortunately, and we can't say that they'll always be there. However, the residents across the street, the homes will always be there. Anyway, for me, and I actually just drove by before the meeting, I, I feel like I see a massive wall of, I'm using my own term for the color, beige, and if that's the way it's going to continue with the addition, it's not something that I find aesthetically pleasing if I were living across the street, even though some of the view might be obstructed by the tree.
We're willing to make, I'm sure my clients will make whatever accommodations to the facade, the board can suggest. That was just one design I proposed.
Yeah, no, no, I, I get it. I mean, I'm not necessarily trying to tell you exactly what to do. I highlighted, you know, an example of, of a request that came when that building was built, and I thought they did a nice job of trying to address the issue. What you come up with, you know, again, is up to you, but that's just my position. I'd like to see something a little more, you know, have a little more architectural design in what people see as they drive by. It's also a major, a major thoroughfare in and out of the barrel.
So, you know, our client just indicated that they're very open to changing the color, coloration in some of the materials, because they do have designers coming in looking at stone, and they want it to look nice also, and that is the, so, so we will work on, you know, providing updated elevations part of the recent, recent plans, you know, that addresses some of these designs and makes it more of a big, basic wall.
Can you add colorization to it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, because I think that would be helpful.
Color, terminals, changes, that will add some interest.
Very good. Thank you.
Chair, how did you want to handle it? Does the board want to look at that?
That's a good question, which I guess as a board, we should discuss. You know, sometimes we allow our professionals to kind of review it, and if they feel it's sufficient, or what the board is looking for, we have gone that, that route as well, but...
Very impactful to the act.
I mean, personally, I feel I would want to see it. I mean, that's just me, so I don't know. Anybody else?
There's a few planned revisions that we've already discussed.
Right.
In addition to this.
Board members, again, speak up.
I'd like to say.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'd just be there.
Okay. Seems like the board would like to see the new.
Thank you, Chair. There's a ground sign currently at Fourteenth and Bowright. What happens to that?
You have a ground sign.
How do we compete?
Yeah.
Character.
No, and we're brown.
I think with that ground sign, there's one that says something about Kennelworth, but not that, we're talking about the other one. Correct, yes, it's got the two tenants, I believe, on.
Yeah, that's outdated.
Yeah. So there'll be no new ground sign. And are you proposing a plant?
No, we are not.
Any reason why?
Never came up. That's something that the, the board would want?
Board members?
A lot of recent applicants have put them in.
Yeah. I mean, I would find it a nice touch, but I don't know that it's something demanding.
They're going to revise this if you want it, they're revising site planning. If you don't, we don't need to get it.
Board members, you feel that that's something that they can do?
I think it would be nice.
I'm not hearing any no's, so.
Those are my questions, Chair. Thank you. And at the appropriate time, I have comments and possible conditions to lay out.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Demasi.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Demasi, that you want to bring in, or maybe? Okay. Board members, anybody have anything else, so we can open the hearing to the public, or? Everyone's good? All right. Well then, would someone like to make a motion to open the hearing to the public?
Somebody?
All right, I see. Mr. Mazzio's hand up is the motion, and second, someone on a second? Mr. Clemente, second? All in favor? Hi, say hi. Anyone opposed? Okay. At this time, the hearing is open to the public. If there's anyone out there who would like to comment on this particular application, and this application only, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members. My name is Robert Hoover. I live at 14 North Wall Street, Kennelworth. I do have some questions. Would it be in three front yards, and in an industrial zone? What is the front yard setback for the front yard?
Not this at 15 feet.
And they're not approaching around that?
No.
My other question is, because we're pushing it out towards Fourteenth Street, there's beginning South Springfield Avenue, with the amount of traffic that we have there, and when we do go up and down Lafayette or Bowright, you know, it's pretty tough to come out there and make a left, you know, from either street. The 32 feet that they're pushing it out, does that violate the triangular site? Will there be any impact on the? Will there be any impact on the triangular segment? Do we know that? Or do we...
That's a good question. I don't know if our professionals...
Asking the applicant. Here's your question.
Okay.
It does not, in fact, the site distance requirement is how far back, 35 feet or 15? Well, usually the site distance measures around the first side, which is either 10 feet direct intersection of stoplight. So the only thing that would actually be anywhere near it would be the trees.
But our ordinance, does our ordinance have a triangular site needed requirement?
Site triangle easement?
Yeah, like 20 feet or 20...
Yeah, I'm not aware that it does, but there is nothing closed in the first, in that first section. We see 15 or 24 feet.
So it sounds like it's... We believe there is.
So can I ask a question to you then? I understand you said the plans are probably going to be revised anyway?
Yeah.
Can you show site distance triangles on both Lafayette and Bowright? Just throw them on air.
Well, there's a difference between a site triangle easement and site distance show, demonstrate the nice, take you to see that.
All right. I think that would ease the question at hand, and you could probably slap it on a drawing with...
Yeah. Is there a requirement, is there a requirement now for a site triangle easement?
Or even site distance triangles?
There's certainly a requirement for site distance triangles. I doubt, but I defer to Mr. Cuero that it would be necessary in this case because of the setback of the street.
There is approximately at least 13 feet from the edge of the building to the curb. So yeah, I think there's a lot of issues.
Yeah, that's good. No problem. Just a question.
Right.
And it's certainly less than the 15 feet that is labored zone.
Thank you. I'm just concerned because I know that Springfield, 14th Street is a district area.
Absolutely.
I ride my white chair, and I'm sure other people walk that work down in the other factories and Walmart, and people are walking along the street all the time, so I'm just looking at the safety aspect.
Absolutely. Appreciate the question.
And if they're going to be revising their plans, the two efforts mentioned across the street, maybe consider with the lighting, present some type of shield and then the candlelight power, candlelight volume, so our professionals can make sure that there's no glare off to the road, again, on traffic, and of course, our residents there.
Right.
And I guess the new readvised plan, the water management system will be on a new plan that our engineer brought up because, you know, with our flow rights, our undersized sewage issues, I, you know, we're struggling now with the flow rate numbers to add water still going down and catch basin.
Right.
I think, you know, the applicant should supply some type of stormwater management on their property for trying to catch that water. So we'll make sure that that's on the plan and sufficient.
Yeah, I believe that was requested and agreed to, right?
And then on Lafayette, because we do have a lot of trucks that go down there with different deliveries, where the building's coming out, I didn't catch how far out it's going to be, and it's going to be 15 feet from the property line or 15 feet from the curb line?
I think the long, well, the applicant can respond, but...
Yeah, Lafayette, the, I believe it's 32 feet to the property line, and additional distance from there to the...
So the number's 32 feet from curb line or...
No, no, two to the property line.
From the, to the property. It's 32.
Yes.
And that would be 32 feet to the curb. Approximately where they want to be. So those parking spaces there, when people do park there, do you want the color actually handed out right away on the curb line or is it all beyond that?
All on their own property, so it's, as mentioned before, by the inch here is that it would be backing directly out into the roadway, as opposed to backing out into a 24-foot wide runway.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just making sure if you did park there, ten trucks or cars were not in the public right away because anybody's coming in and out of there.
These are vehicles, parking spaces, so they're probably out and vehicles.
After we, usually say, put them out, so it will be standard stall at nine eight minutes. Okay. Thank you. Now, we don't like concern and guess in order to think these common consideration and make sure it's been on the plans, and, you know, we look at for safety, the traffic, volume of people, you know, at different factories working there, and of course, our residents. The last thing, I don't know if it's possible, but along that stretch from Monroe Avenue after 22, other than the baseball field and the factory on the other side, when you come out of Lafayette, and Fox Trucking are really the only ones that have sidewalks along that roadway. So I don't know if there's an opportunity for some sidewalks in there as you're walking north or south along there and get some foot traffic off the roadway. I don't know. I'm just asking. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Herbert. Anyone else who'd like to comment on this application? Okay, see, no one can. I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing. Okay, I see Councilman Tumstrella, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Scudari. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. All right. Go back to our professionals. Any last-minute comments before the board starts to discuss how we shall proceed?
Chair, please, the board, as the board goes through their discussion of the application, you may wish to consider some conditions that may be attached to the, to possible approval. Among those would be a revised lighting plan, I'm sorry, a, let's call it revised lighting plan. Revised architectural plan that is subject to the approval of this board at a subsequent Revised plans to include proposed signage, as well as flying pole. And both of our reports, Mr. Cuero's and mine, referred to a possible one-way travel lane on the west side of the building. Since I addressed it, I'll suggest that as a condition. But those are from the planning perspective of, for you, Chairman.
Mr. Cuero, you have it?
Yes. The, um, the additional conditions that I have is the, revising the plans to show the existing depressed curves, a known repair, the existing curb sidewalk payment that is in disrepair. More detail on the retaining wall along the Southley addition, the removal of all the outdoor storage from the site. The warranty on the landscaping is one year.
May I suggest two years, Chairman?
One year. Eighteen.
Thank you.
The applicant, they can do a drainage system. And the last is the cost estimate for...
I think you also have a one-way designation for the aisle parking.
Yes.
For the aisle parking.
And I have a lighting.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So, board members, I think there are a number of outstanding questions on this particular application. I don't know that we're in a position to actually proceed with a vote this evening. Again, if someone feels differently, then obviously you can voice your opinion at this time. So I guess we would be looking to, what, carry this to our October meeting for...
What does that mean?
14th.
October 14th?
Oh, yeah, I'll state it.
Does that work, Mr. Demassey?
Pardon?
You need to check if that'll work for you and your...
You would also...
The project was going to suggest that we may need more than 30...
No, that's fine. I mean, I was just...
They would need time to get the plans to...
Yeah, yeah.
Kevin and Chris.
Right.
New report.
Well, I mean, it's, at this point, it's tomorrow, because today's the 10th, so...
Yeah.
But if they need more, that's fine.
Turn this around like in two weeks.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, if they, if they want more, that's fine.
It could do it.
We've got two applications on for October.
So maybe it's better to push it to November?
Yeah. Bagney and 460 Boulevard.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so it's better to push this to November.
It's November 11th.
November 11th. It's Veterans Day.
It's where 60...
Oh, we still need, barrel wall is closed, but...
If they have it.
It's, 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 based on the...
Trees off.
Yes. And we're not moving the trees. We're not adjusting them in any way. And the right side is already clear, so that's super okay. Any actionists, they're going to sue Chris. Mr. Chairman, what was the October date?
Actually, Mr. Demassey, we're kind of, we were discussing while you were discussing, and we're kind of thinking that the November 11th meeting might be better. We have two big applications already scheduled for October 14th. I mean, I guess we can accommodate if that's your preference. We would do this case first, but...
But you're going to need time to turn those plans around. Provide them to...
We normally require two weeks prior to the meeting.
I do know, Chairman, November 11th is Veterans Day.
Yeah, we were talking about that, but, I mean, the barrel wall will be closed, but we can still meet.
That's our scheduled meeting. It's on my calendar.
Right. November 11th would be okay with us. The one issue that Mr. Anderson just was concerned about was the, we had requested the design waiver regarding the planting in the front. Can the board at least give us the decision on that, or at least on, you know, waivers that we can make now?
Um, I don't...
Any, any...
Any kind of issues with the...
Sign waiver for the plants?
New landscaping is, landscaping is going to be harder to revise right now.
Right.
No.
It's okay.
Okay, just so we... All right, so then November 11th?
We'll shoot for November 11th then.
Okay.
Okay. We'll announce you. Yeah. And you have the plans to us at least two weeks at a time. That's our normal.
That would be a problem.
The sooner the better. Take it 7:00 PM.
Yeah.
Here, no further notice.
Chairman, how many copies do you want? Should go to the whole board, so...
Eighteen copies.
Yeah. We turn it down just like before. Yeah. So you want at least two weeks in advance, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right? Yep. Just for you, Mr. Demassey. Absolutely. Okay. Did you get married by...
Two weeks. Yes.
Nothing tomorrow night?
No.
Nothing tomorrow.
Oh, boy. It's funny, just keep it back down. It's not... It's insane.
Does Mr. Ray want to throw down just the conditions for that meeting?
Well, I think we need to look, we need to look at the revised plans, first of all, because that's a lot. But the other, the other conditions would be basically no retail, indoor storage, you know, which, which, no cutting of stone, that kind of stuff. Let's see the revised plans first. If they cover 90% of it, then we're good. And then we can always add other stuff if we need to.
Do they have direction, because you...
Go ahead, Mr. Demas.
Do they have directions for us? I think the biggest impact is the front elevations that we're concerned. Do they have direction on, like, we know what we're doing for? Are they bringing several options to us? How's that going to work? Or are they going to submit something?
We said colors, materials.
Materials.
Softness.
Right. We didn't give any specific direction.
Colors, material.
Chair threw out some ideas, and it's up to them to present. They may want to give them one or two ideas to let you decide.
Well, I guess if you're talking to them, Mr. Herbert, you can, you can kind of guide them to, they might want to have one or two options, you know?
More than one, more than one's actually bull's eye. Who wants option one or wants option...
Yeah, it's overlay. Anyway. All right. So we are up to the comments for the good of the board. Does any board member have any comment they would like to make for the good of the board?
Poor bastard.
Okay, I don't see anyone. So then, we will now open the meeting to the public for general comment. Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Clemente made the motion to open the meeting. Do I have a second for Mr. D'Amundo? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the meeting is now open to the public for general comment. If there's anyone out there who would like to make such a comment, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'll make it quick, I promise. Robert Herbert, 14 North 12th Street, Bowright Avenue, looks like a minefield hit it. I mean, it is atrocious. So I don't know if that was from the first building being built, or if these guys with the weight of their trucks are driving down. I don't know.
Why don't we not talk about this? It's Bowright in generals in the ballpark, but let's not talk about this application.
Okay. But the roadway is really bad, unsavvy conditions, and you guys should get a look at that.
Well, I have to tell you, that really needs to go before the mayor and council.
If I may, Bowright is on the list of roads to be done. It got awarded yesterday. Bowright is on that list.
Do it after this gets built.
And the other question I have is, do we know, or can we find out, the amount of units that are going to be required by state law for affordable housing? Do we have that number yet? We're going to be looking, unless not.
I don't know. Is that in our jurisdiction?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Your jurisdiction isn't...
Mayor and council.
Mayor and council. Okay, I'll address it with them. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Herbert. Anyone else? Okay, see, no one. I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion of the meeting. I think Mr. Scudari made the motion. I have a second from Councilman Tumstrella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, motion made by Mr. D'Amundo, second by Mr. Scudari. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Kathy, you want to mention anything about this?